Gotcha. Oh, Major League, yes. Okay, we're talking movies up here. Sorry. It's 5:06. We're a little bit late in starting, but good evening and welcome to the Tulsa City Council Meeting. You can view this meeting on our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, Cox Channel 24, or at TGovOnline.org. Jack Blair, our city attorney, Lori Doring, our secretary to the council, and Chris Baughman, council staff, are helping us tonight. If you need to speak on an agenda item, see Chris. He has the signup cards, and you have to file one of those signup cards with him before the item is read in order to be allowed to speak. So join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'd be seated. Counselor Dutton, you have a proclamation for us tonight.
I do.
So National PTSD Awareness Month.
Yes.
And we have officers who are going to receive it as well.
Oh, good. Yay. Okay. I have my best reading glasses on. Alrighty. It's good to go. Can everybody hear me okay? Alrighty. National PTSD Awareness Month. Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder can occur after a person experiences or witnesses a traumatic event and affects approximately eight million adults in the United States annually. And whereas PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. And whereas between 10% to 30% of armed force members will develop PTSD within a year of leaving combat, while others may not develop symptoms until years later. And whereas despite its highly effective treatments, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with the mental health conditions. And whereas all citizens suffering from PTSD, including those who are affected by PTSD from wounds, received while protecting our freedom, deserve our consideration, respect, and recognition. Now therefore, we, the mayor of the City of Tulsa and the Tulsa City Council, do hereby recognize the month of June as National PTSD Awareness Month. In witness thereof, we hereby set our hands on this fourth day of June 2025. And I also want to make a brief comment. We have some great police officers with us to accept the proclamation. I also want to remind everybody with the Fourth of July coming up to be very cognizant about fireworks in your neighborhoods because of our soldiers that have experienced PTSD in combat. So if you all just take that into consideration going forward for the Fourth of July. Come on up. Let Shannon come in here. There you go, Shannon. I'm gonna move down in front of the aisle.
Oh, let's go to the middle.
Thank you very much. Just a few announcements. If you wish to speak on agenda items, you're limited to five minutes. We have this fancy timer up here. You'll see it counting down. Green light means you have plenty of time. Yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. Red light means you have to stop because you're over time. We're working to keep our areas clean of different things, so please don't put anything in the podium area, railings, so that our aisles are free of recording devices and tripods. And as posted on tonight's agenda, certain items are subject to consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision. I call this meeting to order. Lori, please call the roll.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Here.
Counselor Archie?
Here.
Counselor Dutton?
Here.
Counselor Bellis?
Here.
Counselor Gilbert?
Here.
Counselor Bengal?
Here.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Here.
Counselor Lakin?
Here.
Counselor Bush?
Here.
Item one, receipt and filing a minute. A, minutes of regular meeting held at 4:00 PM on May 7th, and B, at 5:00 PM on May the 7th. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 1A and B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Items 1A and B are approved. Two appointments and reappointments. A, Amanda Peregrina Turner, reappointment to the Human Rights Commission, and B, James Dimming, reappointment to the Sales Tax Overview Committee. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker on items 2A and B. Mr. John Huffines.
Good evening.
Good evening. Peace, yes, peace. Thank you to our honorable city leaders, Mayor Monroe Nichols, Council Chair Phil Lakin, councilors, staff and team. And here, I would like to thank Counselor Carol Bush for addressing the Brookside Neighborhood Association Monday night, for her engagement, involvement. And she listens with her heart. She spoke with her heart, and she addressed many questions by the next day, you know, while we were there. Plus, she had some follow-up to do on the next day, so thank you. And of course, we'd like to thank the rest of the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It is a joy to be with you on this fourth day of June in the year of our loving Lord, Jesus Christ, 2025. Yes, appointments and reappointments. A, Amanda Turner, reappointment to the Human Rights Commission. May we continue to honor the rights of baby humans still in the mother's womb. And B, James Dimming, reappointment to the Sales Tax Overview Committee. May we continue to honor our volunteers and employees. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. Huffines. Do we have any more speakers?
We have no more speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 2A and B. Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes. Okay, items 2A through 2B are approved. Ms. Amanda, how are you? Thank you for serving
the Human Rights Commission again.
Thank you, and I really want to thank the mayor, Monroe, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to be still a voice for my community, the Hispanic community, and for the Human Rights Commission, because it's so important in these times to really have a voice and to really give them a voice. So thank you all for this opportunity or for having Tulsa as a welcoming city. That's enormous for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your service to our city. Item three, public hearings. A, public hearing to receive comments regarding a proposed ordinance approving the increased assessments for parcels within the Tulsa Stadium Improvement District Number One. Is there a motion to enter public hearings?
Move to enter public hearing. Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
We're in public hearings. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers on 3A, James and Bernice Alexander.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Audience, good evening. This has always amazed me because where this stadium is sitting, it's in a soon-to-be historical area, but yet the name is Wentworth Field. And we're gonna send you a thing talking about changing the name to Greenwood Stadium, Wentworth Field. Compromise. I don't usually compromise with anything, but I'm a compromiser. You're talking about a 2.9 increase in the assessment for this area. And one thing that always stood out to me is that, first of all, stadium is in the wrong place. As you go back in history and look where stadiums are built and arenas are built, they're usually built where black people stay. And that's always been my problem. I'm finished.
I pass.
I, Stuart McDaniel, 628-632 East 3rd Street.
Hold on just a second. What?
I, this is, I don't-
But we don't have, did you, yeah, what item are you on?
The same item.
Yeah, but did you just fill out the speaker card? What happened, Chris?
He did not fill out his speaker card before the item was read.
Okay, you can't speak.
So is there a second hearing?
Uh, let's see. I think, no, this is-
It has the emergency clause.
Counselor, you can't speak on the ordinance on, on number seven.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you sign up on number seven? What number is that? Jack, do you know? Uh, A. So sign up on 7A and then we'll call you back up.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Without objection, we'll exit public hearings for this. You passed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good. B, public hearing to receive written and oral comments regarding the proposed City of Tulsa fiscal year '26 budget and capital plan. Is there a motion to enter public hearings?
Move to enter public hearings. Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
All right, Chris, how many speakers do we have?
We have 13 speakers.
Okay, who's our first? Is it Mrs. Alexander?
Donald Rose.
Can it be Mrs. Alexander? Is she on the list?
Yes, I have her, I have them in order, but if you want to let her go.
She's right here. We'll let her go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, councilors.
Can you get a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you.
I'm gonna be very brief with this. I just object to whatever it is that you all are planning for the '25, '26 budget and capital plan, because the citizens need to pay attention to how this council votes to handle money for this city, because there's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Donald Rose.
Yep. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hang on just one, hang on just one second. She's-
You can stay here. It's just a timer challenge.
Okay. Ready? Okay. Good evening, city councilors and everyone here. My name is Donald Rose Jr. I'm a 10-year U.S. Army veteran and currently serve as the Director of Operations for the Black Wall Street Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a commissioner on the Greater Tulsa African-American Affairs Commission. I'm also the co-chair of the Oklahoma HIV and Hepatitis Planning Council and a committed community leader. Tonight, I rise to express the chamber's full and unwavering support for Mayor Nichols' proposal to allocate $1 million to continue the mass graves investigation. As both a veteran and a community leader, this issue is not only historic, it is deeply personal and profoundly unsettling. Among the remains uncovered was C.O. Daniel, a World War I veteran. He served this country with honor, yet after the 1921 Race Massacre, he was buried in an unmarked grave, stripped of identity, dignity, and recognition. That should disturb every single one of us. A man who risked his life for this nation was left with no name, no marker, no justice. We owe him more than a belated "thank you for your service." We owe him the dignity of remembrance. There are not just mass graves. They also silence testimonies of black educators, entrepreneurs, elders, and veterans. Our ancestors, whose lives were violently stolen and whose stories were buried alongside them, they deserve more. They deserve a consideration from this body and the entire city of Tulsa that we are now the ones to take responsibility. In the military, I was taught a sacred principle: never leave a man or a woman behind. Tulsa has a moral obligation to carry this work forward, to identify every victim, notify every family, and to restore the dignity that was denied for over a century. The Black Wall Street Chamber of Commerce urges you, do the right thing. Fund this work. Finish what we started. Honor those who built Greenwood and were buried without justice. Mayor Nichols stepped out on faith, faith that this city, regardless of race or background, would stand, we need to stand behind him in this historic endeavor. Tonight, we affirm that faith, no amount of money can erase the stain left by the massacre, but the decisions we make today can define the future we create. Let Tulsa be the city on the hill, not one marked by regret, but one led by courage, truth, and reconciliation. Thank you for your time and your consideration of this critical step toward justice.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kuma Roberts.
Good evening. Good evening, councilors. My name is Kuma Roberts. I'm the president of the Black Wall Street Chamber, a national voice for economic justice as well as collective liberation. Tonight, I stand before you in full support of the Greenwood Trust, the $105 million reparations plan for survivors and descendants of the 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre. I believe that this is more than just money. It is an opportunity to finally invest in a form of new currency. When we say we rich at the Tulsa, at the Black Wall Street Chamber, we're not just talking about wealth measured by dollars alone. I'm talking about the currency of trust, of integrity, and of a community's right to chart its own future. The Greenwood Trust is the final opportunity for our community to liberate itself from generations of theft and disinvestment. It's the down payment on justice and the investment that can transform the pain of the past into the ownership of tomorrow. Tulsa's story will be remembered as a city that finally moved beyond apologies and paid what it was owed, or is it going to be once again refusing that direct action? I urge you all to invest in the Greenwood Trust and in the continuation of the mass graves and prove that in Tulsa, we rich, and we are rich in justice, in dignity, and in that new currency that leaves no one behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Cody Ransom.
Evening. Good evening. So my name is Cody Ransom, and I'm coming to you as one of the historians and tour guides down in Greenwood. What I get to see more than anything is I see people who come from all over the world to learn about the history of Tulsa, Oklahoma. And when I speak about the history of Tulsa, Oklahoma, I'm specifically talking about the Race Massacre. The history of Greenwood is also a history of resilience, not just that massacre. Now, when it comes to finding these bodies, for anybody who has anything against it, you want to speak against finding these particular bodies, imagine if these were victims of 9/11. Would there have been any dollar amount that would not have been spent to find those bodies? Imagine if these were American revolutionary people that we were trying to find. Imagine if George Washington's body was somewhere in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Would there ever have been a penny that wasn't spent to find that particular grave? And so what we're actually talking about is there is a limit on how much can be spent to find black bodies in this particular city. And people come to this particular city to see what black bodies built. And so anyone who opposes finding these particular graves, it tells you a lot about what kind of Tulsa they want to live in. Because if we do not want to find the bodies, if we do not want to continue this investigation into the mass graves, then strip Greenwood out of every promotional piece of material we use in Tulsa, Oklahoma. We can't just benefit from the story and not actually finish the story. We're in the first chapter of the book. And if you finish at that first chapter, no one gets an understanding of what truly happened here. I'm a person that gets to, I get the privilege of talking to people from out of town, and that's the main thing that they ask about. And the reason they ask about that is because when they learn this history, they learn that this history is tied to so many other cities other than Tulsa, Oklahoma. They come here looking for a template, and we leave them with nothing. We can't say that we actually looked for those mass graves. Now, in my lifetime, had we looked for those mass graves 20 years ago, that very same baseball stadium we talked about, those bodies would have already been named, identified, and properly buried. We waited, and because we waited, we now go there and form a celebration. It's also ironic that today I got to hear about, we should be careful when it comes to popping fireworks. But that particular stadium also pops fireworks, and it pops fireworks in a community where people suffered this sort of trauma. A little bit about PTSD, it is also inherited. So what my ancestors went through, Moses Brewer, had a grocery down in Greenwood, so what my ancestors went through is something that we get to feel every single day. Walking the streets of Greenwood every single day, it feels like an incomplete story because that's all we got. And so for anyone who does oppose that, again, I say, imagine this was a piece of history that you actually cared about. Would you spare any dollar expense to find that person? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Taylor West.
Good evening. How you doing?
Greetings, council members. My name is Taylor Rae West, and I am a Senior Organizational Leadership Major at Langston University, where I serve as the Honorable Chief Justice. I am also the youngest Commissioner, serving on the Tulsa Beyond Apology Commission. I did not grow up hearing stories passed down from survivors in my own family, but I did grow up in the shadows of Greenwood. I'm a proud product of Hawthorne Elementary and the North Maybe Boys and Girls Club. I am not a direct descendant, but I am a witness, a witness to how the echoes of nineteen-twenty-one still shape the lives of young black people in Tulsa today. A witness to a legacy of harm that has never been fully addressed until now. And I am a part of a generation that refuses to look away. That is why I have, that is why I am here today to speak in full support of Mayor Monroe Nichols' request for the council to allocate one million dollars from the city budget to continue the mass graves investigation. Imagine not being able to complete your family tree. This is a family history we are seeking to uncover and to connect. We are talking about someone's grandmother, a neighbor's uncle, a church deacon, a teacher, a doctor, a child, and even a war veteran that served this country but was never granted peace in his own hometown. We are talking about real people, mothers who braided hair, fathers who ran grocery stores, children who never got the chance to grow up. Our ancestors, our ancestors deserve better. They deserve more than silence. They deserve to be named. They deserve to be properly buried with dignity and with ceremony and with truth finally at their side. This investigation is the council's opportunity to give families back what was stolen: dignity, identity, and peace. Every day that we hesitate, we send the message that some lives are too inconvenient to honor. And I want to be very clear: I may be young, but I am not alone. There are thousands of young people across Tulsa and millions more across the United States watching this decision very closely. The commission has made their recommendations. The mayor has made his recommendations. So what must we do now? Must we continue pretending that justice takes a century to arrive? Must we leave our elders buried twice, once in violence, again in neglect? No, we must do the work. No, we must fund the investigation. You have a choice: To vote with courage or to stay complicit. Two survivors are still alive. The history is still raw, and the world is still watching. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Donald Rose Jr.
Next speaker? He, he's already been.
Donald Rose Jr.
Yep.
Friends Adamaze.
Good evening.
Good evening. Council members and fellow Tulsans, my name is Pastor Friends Adamaze. I'm the Associate Pastor and Tour Curator of the Historic Vernon AME Church, one of the only structures that survived the nineteen-twenty-one Tulsa race massacre. When I welcome guests to Vernon, I take them to our original foyer. It's there that I recite the words, "Run to Vernon, run to Vernon, Vernon is a safe place." And the impact of me saying those words to them and then having them to look outside of our glass doors into the street called Greenwood and advising them at that moment, that lives stopped, family bloodlines stopped that day, there was no respect a person, men, women, boys and girls were massacred in that street. And I have them to visualize that because that's a really, real and authentic reality to what the crime scene represents even today. As we're coming to speak before you, we want you to understand that those same bombs that were dropping from airplanes where there was a receipt that gave an actual name of who that was, but the Department of Justice came back later on to tell us that the Statue of Limitations was up? The fact that we have to realize that this was not foreign soil. This was Tulsa. It was Greenwood. A place that, when those families ceased and families were wiped out, there were no more descendants. So I don't stand before you today as a descendant. I'm not even from Tulsa. But I'm advocating on behalf of those lives that were lost that day, that don't have a voice, that don't have a representation, that fail to exist. I've spoken with others in the community that are still paralyzed as residents of Tulsa by the fear of what happened on May thirtieth, nineteen-twenty-one, still. So as we reflect on today, and I echo what Cody stated about the PTSD Awareness Month, my home is approximately four minutes away from Jolla Stadium. And when I have guests and when I'm striving to sleep myself, I'm having to hear the explosions of the fireworks. And we have the audacity to stand here and, and have a part of the agenda, a request, to do what's right. When these fireworks, the expense and the cost of the fireworks alone, count up the cost of doing what's right. That's what we're asking you to do today. And as we reflect on the bodies that still lay up under the dugout and up under I-244, when we reflect on all of the remnants of the massacre and those that, that will never be recovered, what we're asking you to do is create a strategic plan instead of making us continue to ask for permission for you to do what's right. Help us to identify the dead that's in our community. Undeniably, this happened, and no human being should be okay with continuing to cover it up. Not when these sounds and these explosions are continuous in our community. There are good things happening in Tulsa, and I'm encouraged by that. However, justice must be a part of that. Restoration and growth must be a part of that. We must face our past, clean up our house, and stop asking whether it's time to act. It is. Because we're in the end, what do we do? What do we all want? We all want peace. The peace of knowing that justice and real justice has finally been served. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Reverend Keith R. Mays, Sr.
Good evening. Good evening. To the Honorable Mayor Nichols, Deputy Mayor Reyes, to the Honorable City Council Chairperson, and to the members of the council, and to all the citizens of Tulsa, thank you for allowing me the privilege to speak on this matter, not just about the past, but about the heart and the future of this city. My name is Keith Mays. I have the honor of serving as pastor of Historic Vernon AME Church, the only black owned structure standing from before the nineteen-twenty-one race massacre. Our basement holds the scars of that day. Our sanctuary holds the hope of the people who rebuilt it. Our mission still serves the community today. I stand before you, not just as a pastor, but as a Commissioner appointed by the former mayor, G.T. Bynum, to serve on the Beyond Apology Commission, as a spiritual transplant of Greenwood, and as a man who still believes in righteousness and justice. History still hurts, but healing is possible. In nineteen-twenty-one, the Greenwood District, America's Black Wall Street, was ravaged by racial hatred. The death toll reached into the hundreds, and many of them murdered were buried secretly, without ceremony, without justice. For over a century, that silence has shouted at us, and the graves have haunted this city's soul. This is not about guilt. This is about grace. This is about dignity. This is about doing right in the eyes of the Lord and in the eyes of this city. And to, and to those who say, "Well, I wasn't there back then," I say this: Were you here when Jesus died on Calvary? No. But if you claim that salvation, you also have to claim that history. So don't tell us what you weren't here for, because we're here now, and we're responsible for what we do in this moment. Honorable councilors, I'm sure that most, if not all, of you who occupy those seats would certainly say you believe in family values. Well, let me tell you that there are many families who are still waiting to bury their loved ones the right way. That's a value, too. The boldness of Mayor Monroe Nichols. Monroe Nichols didn't create this catastrophe. However, Tulsa should be proud that he has not blinked in the face of this buried injustice. He has demonstrated moral clarity, political courage, and historical conviction by releasing forty-five thousand hidden documents, reviving the Oversight Committee, and recommending one million dollars in funding. He is doing what others only talked about. He's taking action. This is what leadership looks like. Not safe leadership, not symbolic leadership, but sacrificial and courageous leadership. Counsel, this should be viewed as a unified effort, not a divisive debate. Let us be clear on this matter. This is not a black issue. It's not a white issue. It's not a Democrats' dream or Republicans' regret. This is a Tulsa truth issue, a moral mandate, a human obligation. We must refuse to let political pause in progress. We must refuse to let parties prevent partnership and prejudice-paralyzed purpose. This must be a bipartisan and biracial journey, a community and countrywide commitment, a sacred assignment, not a social suggestion. Why does this one million dollar matter? The initiative will continue to critical research for unmarked graves, connect families to their forgotten history, create closure for communities that still carry trauma. It's not just about the bones in the ground. It's about dignity for the dead, decency for the descendants, determination to do what's right. Real results already been seen. It's been talked about, the veteran C.L. Daniels, this proved that this work matters. His family now has what so many others are still longing for: Closure, clarity, and peace. As a senior pastor of Historic Vernon Church, the only structure to survive those flames, I stand not only as a spiritual leader, but a living link between our city's painful past and our promising future. Vernon AME is more than brick and mortars. It's sacred ground, a survivor's sanctuary, and a symbol of hope. Oklahoma became a state in nineteen-oh-seven, but Vernon has stood there since nineteen-oh-five. Built by hands, we're named after Bishop W.M.T. Vernon, who was the first African-American to ever sign US currency when President Roosevelt made him the Secretary of the Treasury in nineteen-oh-six. That's something we should all be proud about. For a hundred and twenty years, this church has served, supported, and stood for this community. Our church has invested interest in this healing process. We preach funerals with our names. We pray for families with no graves to visit. We've carried the collective grief to Greenwood for generations. Now we're ready to carry the torch of truth. I close with this plea to the council: Honor the memory, don't hide the history. Fund the search, don't bury the truth again. Join hands across party lines, pews, and precincts because healing is holy. May the city be remembered not only for the tragedy that happened, but for the truth that we've uncovered, the families we restored, and the courage we showed to do what's right. Let us not fail. We have a chance to lead. We have a chance to deliver, not delay. God bless you, council, and we commend you in your work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Greg Taylor.
Good evening. Good evening. I had to pa, I had to follow Pastor Mays. Uh, so good evening to the honorable first black mayor, Monroe Nichols, to councilors Vanessa Hall Harper, Counselor Anthony Archer, Jackie Dutton, Laura Bellis, Karen Gilbert, Christian Bengal, Lori Decter Wright, Phil Lakin Jr., and Carol Bush. My name is Greg Taylor. I'm a District One resident, and proud of that. And I'm a builder. My wife's a teacher at TCC. We started together a nonprofit and moved to District One on purpose because of the folks that we, uh, serve in the nonprofit. After learning more of the massacre story, we founded a nonprofit called One Two Five Six Movement that refers to the number of homes that were burned on June first, nineteen-twenty-one. And, uh, we believe in the nonprofit that if white people, since white people burned twelve-hundred-and-fifty-six homes in one day, white people ought to be involved in helping to rebuild twelve-hundred-and-fifty-six homes in North Tulsa and Greenwood. This is based on a, uh, old Jewish idea, three-thousand years old, called restitution. A lot of people call it reparation these days. But in the council, if I have my history right, on the week after the massacre, this body discussed reparations, and they said to the watching world that had compassion and wanted to send money, "We got this." And they told the world not to send money and, uh, didn't end up doing anything for a hundred and four years. The only thing that the council and the city did do on reparations was they felt sorry for the gun shop owners who had guns and ammo stolen out of their shops when the Tulsa's police deputized three hundred men and boys and said, "Get a gun and get an inward." And they took those guns and they murdered three hundred black people in this city. And the council decided to pay reparations to those gun shops for the murder weapons that were used to murder black people. Now imagine if this had happened in your district. It could have. Could have happened in any one of your other eight districts. And what would you have done? And what would you do as a representative? And what would your people do? I, I think you know and I know that they would fight like heck for restitution and compensation for damages and for finding their loved ones that were buried in mass graves. And you wouldn't rest until you found those loved ones and you gave them a proper burial. And you'd do whatever it took and never rest until that happened. And so I'm here to support the funding of the million dollars for the nineteen-twenty-one mass graves investigation, ongoing, and to do that because it's the right thing to do. As Mayor Monroe Nichols said on Sunday, it's because what decent people like you would do. It's just what decent people do because it's the right thing to do. And I think that you would do that to vote for one another if it was your, if it was in your district. And I think another question we could ask the mayor is, is one million enough?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Phil Armstrong.
Good evening. Great name.
Good evening, councilors. Phil Armstrong, President and CEO of Oklahoma Center for Community and Justice, past founding and interim Director of Greenwood Rising, Black Wall Street History Center, past Director of the nineteen-twenty-one Tulsa Race Massacre Centennial Commission, and currently proud member of the city's Commission, Beyond Apology Commission. You've heard a lot this evening towards supporting the one million dollars for the, um, mass graves and continuing that work that G.T. Bynum started. I want to give you a true-life story of what happened. In a conversation with me in spring of twenty-twenty-one, Counselor Lakin has probably heard me say this many times, and I've shared it with many Tulsa citizens. Uh, I'm an avid bowler. Probably people don't know that. Bowled for several years, and on Tuesday nights, you can find me at Sheridan Lanes, and I actually carry a two-oh-nine average, so I'm a pretty good bowler. But one night, spring of twenty-one, I walked in to prepare to bowl, and a seventy-year-old white Tulsan who had become a friend of mine, um, his name was Jim Bodine. He's passed and gone on to heaven now, but he berated me and said, "What are you all doing? And why are you continuing to draw?" continuing to drag people through the mud of history that we can't control? We didn't have..." And I said, "What are you talking about, Mr. Bodine?" And he said, "You guys, now you're digging up bodies, and you just can't leave well enough alone. It happened 100 years ago. Why do we still have to keep doing this?" The one thing I did is I listened. I didn't interrupt him. I listened and let him get it out. And then I said, "Mr. Bodine, can I ask you a question?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "If 100 years ago, your grandmother told you that one day your grandfather left the house because something terrible was happening in the community, and he never came back, and all your grandmother's been able to tell you that one day he left, didn't come home, several people were killed, this terrible thing happened, and all we can assume is that he was a part of that destruction and that damage and that murder and that terror. We don't have birth certificate. We don't have time of death. We don't have a grave marker. All we know is that something happened to him that time, and we have to assume that that happened. And you've lived with that story all your life. And one day, 100 years later, somebody comes to you and says, "Guess what? I think we might know what happened to your grandfather. In fact, I think we might know where he's buried." I said, "Would you and your family not want to know that?" He stood there in silence, and as I'm standing before you right now, a tear went down his cheek, and he said, "I've never thought about it like that," turned around and walked away. I didn't know if he was still mad. I didn't know what was going on. Came back next Tuesday night. He comes and searched me out. "Philip!" And I said, "Oh, go. Here he goes again." And he said, "Did they find any of those bodies yet? Are they looking for those bodies? We need to do that. The City of Tulsa needs to continue doing that." Every Tuesday, he would come and find me and ask me that question. What I'm telling you is the power of relationship, the power of communities, and their perceptions of what they hear on the TV, what they hear talked about at coffee diners, when they make it a human story for themselves, they realize why this is so important, and why this has already been said, "Not a black issue, not a white issue. This is a Tulsa thing." So, yes, the legal courts have said that we no longer have a legal obligation, but we, as human citizens, have a moral obligation. We did not have a part of what happened 100 years ago. Neither you or I were there. But we are all stewards of what happened, and we are in positions of power to help repair some of the things. The root word of reparations is repair. Help repair the damage. I remind you of what G.T. Bynum said when he made the announcement that we were going to invest. At that time, private dollars, $1 million into the investigation, and he said, "When you die and are murdered in Tulsa County, it is the obligation of this city to find out what happened." We are still trying to find out what happened. And so I implore you, for the City of Tulsa, for where we are in this history, continue to support the $1 million in funding so that these families can find out what happened to their loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kristi Williams.
Hello. Good evening, councilors. Y'all laughing at me because I had to pull this microphone down?
Your counselor asked for a step ladder.
Yeah, you took some of my time away with that. Well, good evening, council. I know many of you. My name is Kristi Williams, a descendant of the 1921 Tulsa Race Massacre and Chair of the Beyond Apology Commission, and also served on the original Mass Graves Oversight Committee, until that committee kicked us out for asking too many questions, and it became the Out of Sight Committee. So let me just start with this. This isn't grave stuff. This is sacred work. Last week during the discussion of the budget hearing, I heard someone make the statement, well, ask the question, "How long does this grave stuff go on? What's the timeline?" That question wasn't just dismissive. It was insensitive, and it signaled to me that the concern about the city's budget outweighed the real cost of honoring the lives buried in those mass graves. But no budget is more sacred than justice, and no line item outweighs human life. When I served on the Mass Graves Oversight Committee, I was able to volunteer, and I carried children out of the mass grave, and they don't talk about that. They range from ages three to 10 years old, and I will never forget those images in my head. I carried children out of that mass grave, and the city returned them and put them back in the mass grave. So the answer to that question, how long does this grave stuff take? It's going to go on until it's done, until we bring every ancestor, until we give every family the dignity of knowing what happened to their loved ones, until the City of Tulsa makes good on its moral obligation. And then there was a comment that I thought was kind of good. How do we educate the constituents who either don't know or who just don't give a damn? And when they ask, if your constituents ask you, "Why does it matter?", here's what you can tell them. The U.S. Department of Justice 2025 report on the Tulsa Race Massacre directly addressed the mass graves. The DOJ confirmed this was a coordinated, military-style attack that killed hundreds of black Tulsans. It found that victims were buried in mass graves, dumped in the Arkansas River, hauled off on flatbed railcars, and hidden in unmarked graves, making it impossible to count the dead. That's why we continue to search, because we are still uncovering the truth the city tried to erase. And I know some of your constituents will say, "Let the past be the past. That was in the past." But here's what I know. None of us were here in 1921. None of us. But we're here now in 2025, and we get to decide whether we finish what we started or do we continue this sick, ungodly injustice and cover-up. President Ronald Reagan said, "We must reject the idea that every time a law's broken, society is guilty rather than the lawbreaker. It is time to restore the American precept that each individual is accountable for his actions." Well, Tulsa must be accountable, not just for what we didn't do in 1921, but for what we refused to finish in 2025. Our Mayor Monroe Nichols has been courageous. He didn't take the easy road. He took the right one. Now, this council must follow suit. This $1 million request isn't a gift. It's justice work. It's unfinished business, and truth left behind is truth denied. So let's continue the mass graves investigation for C.L. Daniel, for every name still unknown, for a city ready to stop hiding from itself, because history doesn't sleep even when it's buried. This is our turn to tell the truth. This is our time to repair what racism tried to ruin. Will we bury the truth again, or will we finally raise it up to the light of justice? I hope you vote yes and fund this search to continue. Heal this city and honor those we lost, and may justice rise from the ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not just grave stuff.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nate Morris.
Good evening.
Good evening. When you told me in December, Phil, that you missed me, I took it literally, so here I am. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before y'all. I was on the TPD website earlier, and on their website, there's a page that lists the cold cases in this city. And from 19, I think it's '60, until today, there are over 400 people whose lives were stolen and who never received justice. And I read budgets for some reason. I read them whenever they come out every year, and I've never seen a line item that specifically required this council to vote to ensure that there were resources to solve cold cases. I've never seen family members or community members or friends or advocates of folks whose lives were stolen in murder have to come here and ask for that funding, not just once or twice, but countless times. And I think about the things that Cody and others have said tonight, and it begs the question as to why. And if folks up here are wondering, you know, I'm not sure how we got, if everybody here is unanimous, right, and agreeing that we're going to vote for this, great. But I want us to just note the fact that there shouldn't even be a question at any point in time as to whether or not something like this, this $1 million, 1/10th of 1% of our budget, will go toward getting justice for people in our city. Because of those 400 people on the TPD website, not one of them includes the hundreds of people who are still buried beneath our city, who were killed for no other reason than the color of their skin. Four years ago Monday, this council unanimously, some of you weren't here, on the council, I mean, but the council unanimously passed a resolution promising this city that we wouldn't just apologize for the massacre, but that we would go beyond that apology and do what we needed to do to make it right. And I appreciated, Counselor Bangle, I appreciated your words earlier where you brought up C.L. Daniel, and you brought up the impact that that had on you, to hear his name and hear his story and be a part of ensuring that his family got those answers and got justice. And there are hundreds more, of all ages, as Kristi just reminded us, whose families are still waiting for that justice. And this is something, not that this council has to do, it's something I believe that you have a distinct, it should feel like an honor to allocate funding from this city to get justice for people who were so long denied it. And so I ask that when we think back to what this council passed four years ago this week, that we recognize how critical it is to hold fast to our word that we are a city that believes in justice, to hold fast to our word that we are a city where everybody's life matters, and that we are a city that will not allow a single family member, a single person, a single member of our community, to have to come before this council and ask time and again for funding for justice. So I thank you. I thank Mayor Nichols for, as I've said many times, being brave and asking for this funding and the budget. And I'll note that because the Emmett Till Genealogy Grant was also brought up, in a circular way, that grant, the city was able to get that grant because of the work that it was doing with the mass graves. And that grant allows people in this community, whether they are descendants of the massacre or not, to be able to learn about their family genealogy. And it also trains police officers in our city to help them better be able to solve cold cases through genealogy. So we are getting justice through this work for people across our city. And so I just urge you to vote yes, not just tonight, not just for one, not tonight, excuse me, not just this year, but for as long as it takes, year after year, until the work is done. Because if that's not a question for anybody else, then it shouldn't be a question for this as well. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our last speaker is Alicia Oduwale.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Alicia Oduwale, just a point of correction. I am an archaeologist by training, but I'm also someone who is coming to you as a citizen, born and raised here in Tulsa. I'm a product of Booker T. Washington High School, but also the University of Tulsa. And if you had asked me in 2020, I would say that's the extent of my connection here. But since doing research, doing archaeological research here in Greenwood, I found out that I am a descendant, and that is something that we are working hard to reconnect my own family in this story. Now, as someone who was part of the Oversight Committee, that we already heard is now the Out of Sight Committee, I was also part of the Physical Investigation Team and the Historical Narrative Team. I was placed on all three committees because the, excuse me, I have to get through this. So I was put on all three committees because I'm currently the only black archaeologist in this city. I was placed on all three committees because there needed to be a level of representation across all three of our committees that would be in conversation with one another. That was the original plan. So I'm asking that this body of people that are there to represent our districts will vote yes, not only on the $1 million being proposed for this budget, but will also reinstate the power that was entrusted to the Public Oversight Committee in its original format, and offer some sort of a liaison, a team that would ensure that there's transparency across every one of our committee structures and how those operations work, especially when it comes to the Physical Investigation Team. Because as Kristi mentioned, there are children still in those graves, but one thing that is important to know is that when they were reinterred, the Public Oversight Committee was not alerted to that, but also directly against the request of the Public Oversight Committee to reinter them back in the mass grave wrapped in the Tulsa flag. So I think that, one, we need to consider that as someone who's been researching historical trauma and using archaeology to research historical trauma, it's not just about these lost loved ones who have been interred in this space, but have been interred in a space that's against their families and the people who was chosen to represent them against their will. And when we think about the children who are still in these graves, one thing to note is that when we're looking at trauma on physical bodies, it's not just about the bullets, knife fragments, and open wounds, but the signs of trauma that extend to malnutrition. A lot of the graves, a lot of the ancestors that are in those graves actually have something called enamel hypoplasia that actually shows up on your teeth for extended time periods of malnutrition and mass starvation. We have to think about not just what these people had to endure that one day, but what they endured in Tulsa for a long extended time that we still haven't accounted for. So I ask that this committee vote yes, approve this budget, but also rethink how this structure was done before so that we can have more transparency and more equity, grace, and consideration for the people and their descendants, and all the people that need to be reconnected back together across the Greenwood diaspora. Thank you. Oh, wait. Hold on. I got one more minute. I forgot to say something. It's okay. So in one of the previous meetings you had, someone said that there were possibly one or two other sites of interest that could contain mass graves. I've been researching this for at least a decade now, and there are at least 36 that we have accounted for between myself, my doctoral student, and my team of African diaspora archaeologists that are all working on this together. So I would say that we have a long way to go. It's not just one or two left, and it's not just about finishing Oakland. We have a massive amount of work to find and bring all of our ancestors home. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, do we have any more speakers?
We have no more speakers.
Okay, without objection, we will exit public hearings for Mayor's Items. The mayor's not with us, so we don't have a report from him. Counselor Bush is going to recuse on Items 4B through O, which will not be read aloud. However, public comments will be received on these items. Do we have any speakers on 4B through O?
We have two speakers, first on Items 4M and O, Mr. John Huffeins.
Thank you, councilors. Yes, Mayor's Item M, March for Jesus. Who is this Jesus, and what is he about? The Holy Bible, the good book, lets us know Jesus of Nazareth was born of a virgin. Her name? Mary. Jesus was and is fully God and fully man. The Holy Bible, God's love letter to humans, tells us God's love of the world that He gave His only begotten Son, that whoever believes in Him should not perish. gave His only begotten Son, that whoever believes in Him should not perish but have everlasting life. Jesus came as the Lamb of God. He chose to die for our sins. One day He will come again as the lion of the tribe of Judah. This march for Jesus is one way some Christ followers choose to express love for Him. As many know, He must be born again to see the kingdom of God. We know this is true because Jesus said so. He also said we are to love God with all our heart, mind, soul, and strength, and He said we are to love our neighbors as ourselves. Thank you, councilors, for loving your constituents and all the citizens of Tulsa to the best of your ability. Yes, this march for Jesus is a great opportunity for Christians to remain united. Yes, to Jesus, the Son of God. He walked the Via Della Rosa for us. He shed His blood for us to have the opportunity to receive Him and have our sins washed away. He died for us so we may say yes to the opportunity to march for Him. It is my understanding some remarkable Hispanic pastors are organizing this again this year. Hispanics are beautiful people, and I'm grateful, grateful this event is presented for everyone to enjoy. Yes. And Mayor's item O, Event Application Tulsa, Juneteenth, scheduled for June. So here we are, finding, okay, it's also known as Freedom Day and Emancipation Day. I'm grateful for President Lincoln signing the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, which many believe helped prepare the way for the eventual freeing of the slaves. In 1864, President Lincoln was presented a Bible from an organization, Loyal Colored People of Baltimore. It is reported President Lincoln responded and said, "In regard to this great book, I have but to say it is the best gift God has given to man. All the good the Savior gave to the world was communicated through this book, but for it we could not know right from wrong. All things most desirable for man's welfare here and hereafter are to be found portrayed in it." My thoughts are, my thoughts are, thank you, President Lincoln, for saying this, and thank you, councilors, for showing your love for Tulsans by supporting the Juneteenth Festival. In 1865, slaves were set free by the 13th, by the 13th Constitutional Amendment. Yes. So thank you, councilors, and may we all continue to be set free.
Thank you, Mr. Huffines. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker on item 4O, Bernice Alexander.
Yes, councilors, I agree with the Juneteenth Festival celebration that the people are asking for, but the people need to be present at this council meeting to demand what belongs in their community. I don't understand how come the people and the council that is representing the area does not speak up for that area on situations that need to be taken care of. And we're still involved in the complaint process, our neighborhood association, myself and my husband. And people are talking about Greenwood, I understand, but the riot or the massacre never stopped. It never stopped. It's just a different choice of weapons that are being used. HUD was created to help black people move forward in this United States of America. Tulsa has been receiving a check every September for that black area over there, North Tulsa. And that, that area does not represent the monies that have been sent into that community to help keep that area built up. The money is being misused. And we're working on closing out this investigation and work that we have been doing. And we know how you feel about the area, because when we started working on behalf of that area, you let the water and the sewer systems fail. And I wrote an EPA complaint to get that corrected.
Can you bring your comments back to Juneteenth?
Thank you. Most of the corrective action that has taken place in that community has been a result of federal complaints filed on behalf of that community by our neighborhood group, me being the writer, and you're still doing what you were doing in 1921. And I can say, it doesn't bother me and my husband, we know that this is an assignment, but you all have destroyed two of our homes, taken our water meter from my husband's childhood home, withheld illegally.
You gotta come back to Juneteenth.
This is about Juneteenth, because Juneteenth is celebrating.
No, we've heard about this.
Tell me what Juneteenth is about. You tell me what it's about. Because you're trying to tell me that I don't know what it's about.
This is not our time to speak, but I know it's not about your house that you've talked to us about multiple times in the past.
Well, what it's about is they're celebrating freedom, but there's no freedom over there. You can hear in the voices of these people here, you've changed weapons. You're not dropping bombs and shooting at the people and all that crazy stuff that went on in 1921, but you've been stealing the HUD money from the people so that they can't get what they're supposed to have. And we're still working on those situations to correct. So the people that would show up for Juneteenth, probably on Greenwood, the work has not stopped. It has not stopped. You're being attacked by this local government, and you need to come down here and look at these people and confront what they're doing. The federal complaints have to be filed ongoing to get things done in that area that should be done just because we're in this community. That's all I have to say. Just one other note, I know my husband and I are supposed to be here, and we're supposed to be doing the work that we've been doing now for about 30 years to help correct problems in that community that you all are creating. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernice. Do we have any other speakers?
We have no more speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 4B through O with the emergency clause on 4B through 4F.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Lakin?
Yes.
Councilor Archie?
Yes.
Councilor Dutton?
Yes.
Councilor Bellis?
Yes.
Councilor Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilor Bangle?
Yeah. 4B through O are approved with emergency clause on 4B through F. Five authorities, boards, and commissions, a monthly status report for the Sales Tax Overview Committee. Good evening. How are you?
Hi, I'm fine, thank you.
Great.
Kathy Seibert. Good evening, councilors. I'd like to call attention to two pages received in this month's STOC. Hard copy report, those that were entitled, Major Capital Improvements Construction Fund Summary as of April 30th, 2025, provided to City Council and the STOC by City of Tulsa Capital Planning Analyst Jake Epp and submitted by STOC Chair Ashley Webb. The percentage of funds in each package expended are Sales Tax Packages Fund 401 and 403, the 2001 Third Penny Sales Tax, and 2006 Advanced Sales Tax Funds, 100% completed. Fund 402, 2006 Third Penny Sales Tax Fund is 98% completed. Fund 404, 2008 Sales Tax Special Temporary Streets Fund is 97% completed. Fund 405, 2016 Sales Tax Fund is 87% completed. Fund 406, 4000, 2016 Sales Tax is 86% completed. Fund 4006, 4001 through 4003, 4004, 2016 Revenue Bond Fund is 98% completed. Fund 409, 2020 Sales Tax Funds are 68% completed, and of the general obligation, or GO bonds, as they're referred to, and Water and Sanitary Sewer Fund Packages, Fund 425, 2005 General Obligation Bonds are 100% expended, completed now. Fund 426, 2008 GO Bonds are also 100% expended. Fund 427, 2014 GO Bonds are 86% spent. Fund 428, 2020 GO Bonds are 52% spent, and 4029, 2024 GO Bonds are 34% spent. Voters can be assured that as they approve these packages, the funds are followed closely over the years with oversight through the planning, design, permitting, construction, inspections, and corrections phases until the promised projects are fully completed, signed off on, and accounts closed. Any interest left over in those accounts when work is completed is later administered by the Mayor's Office. Major Gillian Pippin answered an STOC member's question this past April about TPD's purchase of the newest helicopter that I'd like to share. The TPD helicopters are on a 10-year replacement schedule. Major Pippin said the 10-year mark is a good time for replacement because the unscheduled repairs start increasing by that point, which drives their operation costs up. Another benefit is that the way TPD maintains their aircraft, the resale value at the 10-year mark is still good. And regarding onboard equipment, they put thousands of hours on the IR cameras and radios, and by the 10th year mark, there is advancement in technologies that can make some of the equipment they use obsolete by then. She invited us to discuss any questions or concerns with Lieutenant Nick Corey, as he is very happy to address questions and concerns. Now, to Districts 1 and 2, necessary repairs and renovations and improvements are ongoing at TPD Uniform Divisions Riverside and Gilcrease. Emergency repairs and replacement of elevators in the Civic Center's parking lot garage continue. You'll recall that Uniform Division East is going to be rolled into the Public Safety Center, and so any kind of funds that they had holding on to do something about that will be addressed later down the line. District 3 work was reportedly begun on 5/5/2025 for the animal shelter expansion Phase 1 and 2. Fundraising will continue for additional hoped-for amenities that aren't covered under the original funds. At McClure Park Pool in East Tulsa, also in District 3, completion of the observation deck and sun sail shade feature with crushed gravel under artificial turf did not meet the anticipated start of the summer swim season for the third swim season in a row. Perhaps if the weather behaves for a few days, there will be shade for parents and families on the north observation deck sometime this month or next. Fingers crossed. The bizarre grocery store on the northeast corner of East Pine and North Yale Avenue is under construction. The first reimbursement invoice was received on April 30th, 2025. Last time I was in that area and went by, I didn't see anything but grass. The same with the animal shelter site, so I'm planning to go by soon to see if they've got something to show off yet. The rains continue to bedevil the best-laid plans at city departments. District 4, the shared OSU Veterans Hospital's parking garage foundations are being poured. There will be 400 dedicated spaces for veterans. There is a job site camera link on your May report if you have not already checked it out. Family Safety Center Campus Building at 2829 South Sheridan Road is well under construction. Mary Wambles Cabs Group and ARPA Fund reps are visiting the site every six weeks. The Sanford and Irene Bernstein Family Foundation is making a generous gift to Tulsa that will build two playgrounds at two city parks. Hicks Park ceremonially broke ground on May 22nd for their all-inclusive, all-abilities playground, similar to the very popular Whiteside Park, all-inclusive, all-abilities playground that is several years old now and very well used. Bales Park in West Tulsa, District 2, is in the second city park project to be done in that regard and to be receiving the all-American, or the all-inclusive, all-abilities playground soon. District 6, Carl Smith Park Sewer Lagoon Expansion and Repair. Tulsa Water and Sewer Department has taken over the management of this project due to their expertise, and Savage Park improvements are still listed to be completed by purchase orders through city annual contractors in coordination with the Little League Users Group. District 7, Regarding the Public Safety Center, will combine TPD, TFD, City Medical, TAEMA, and Asset Management into one campus. The same day we met for our Zoom call for Parks and Public Safety on May 8th, there was a call to work on how to match the scope of the building uses to the budget, existing conditions to further, to future growth. Getting everything to fit will be the challenge, Mary Wamble told us. District 8, Design continues on the 81st Harvard to Yale Road Project. It came as a surprise to me when we were told it would be as expensive as the Signal Hill Road widening project completed last year at a cost of nearly $30 million. Regarding 91st and Yale to Harvard, we understand that the city is on the cusp of advertising for a contractor anytime now. Another note regarding the streets review process, one page has about 50 projects on it that we oversee. At present, we have two pages of over 100 projects that are queuing up between the finish of design and the bidding for start of construction. Awarding of these contracts will begin this fall, as monies come from the new fiscal year and will continue to be awarded in 2026. District 9, Hunter Park Renovation and Expansion. Trail plans are still in design, awaiting those from Macintosh. Interior improvements are being made in coordination with ADA Hunter Improvements. The improvements are expected to be made through purchase orders. Restroom modifications are underway under the existing Ben Construction Contract. Fred Johnson Park Land Plan is proceeding with the design plans. 95% drawings for city review were expected on 5/14 of 2025. I don't know if they have arrived yet for city review. July, August, 2025 is when the project is expected to be sent out for bids. At the March 27th STOC meeting, we were updated by Shane Fernandez, President and Chairman of USA BMX. In the last three years, Tulsa has been home to 150,000 visitors from over 40 countries, hosted three national championships, the Paris 2024 Olympic Qualifier, and UCI World Cup. The 2025 Elite BMX National Championships were held here in Tulsa's Hardesty National BMX Stadium. It's the home of USA Cycling's BMX Racing National Team. There have been 1,245 international Olympic team training days here. We have seen 4,750 new youth riders on bicycles formed here as they work within our community, had eight RISE cohorts serve North Tulsa's underserved youth, participate in the formation of 20 regional schools launching BMX teams, participated in 110 community events, concerts, rallies, corporate events, fundraisers, industry showcases, and also participated in STEM educational programs and discovery lab with 250,000 students nationwide. Tulsa, Shane says, is on the radar of every global BMX event. STOC members will once again don hard hats to see the newest updates in the Gilcrease Museum Building Project on June 13th. Regarding STOC vacancies, the 12-month attendance record shows one vacancy in District 3. 20 of 21 positions are currently filled on the committee. The STOC's officers for the coming year were elected at last month's May 27th meeting. Ashley Webb will continue as STOC Chair, Linda Jenkins as Vice Chair, and Scott Griswold as Secretary. Any questions?
Yes.
Just point of information, Hunter Park is not in D9.
Oh, okay. I'll go ahead and flip that up. I spent part of the day trying to make sure that I had all the numbers right on these things.
I know where it is, though.
You do? And you're happy with what's going on so far?
Yeah.
Okay. It should be, it should be in A then.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty, got it. Anybody else?
She's just envious.
Yes. We all are. I hear some great things are going on out there.
They are, they are. Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Do we have any speakers on the STOC report? Do we have any speakers on the STOC report?
We have no speakers.
All right. Item number B, Minor Platt for Williams Court Edition, consisting of six lots, one block on point six-four acres. Rezoning, C is rezoning application Z seven eight oh nine from RS three to RM two with an ODP for property located east of the southeast corner of East Sixteenth Street South in South Atlanta. Do we have any speakers on these two items?
We have two speakers on item five B, James and Bernice Alexander.
Good evening, once again.
Good evening.
Oh, that was very lively. You know, there's an area in Tulsa that was set up by the United States in nineteen fifty-nine to govern what goes on in that area. It is set up as a community development area by the federal government. And it is the only place in Tulsa that has a monetary value with a planning attached to it, and that is North Tulsa. And I have gone over the areas time and time again. And this was set up by an entity that plans for the city of Tulsa. With North Tulsa, the citizens that live in North Tulsa are the planners, and the money is community development, blanque red money, which has been used everywhere but in North Tulsa.
Mr. Alexander, how does this apply to the plat or the rezoning application?
Woo, I'm gonna get to it.
Come on.
I'm gonna get to it. I gotta set up what I'm doing. Now, before I was rudely interrupted, can I get my time back?
You got plenty of time.
Oh, I want my time back. Okay, now, Tulsa Metropolitan Area Planning Commission set this up, and it says six lots. Thank you for walking off, miss lady, because she's not doing nothing anyway.
Please focus your comments on your objective.
She's part of the comment, because she's not doing nothing for her community, or I wouldn't be standing here.
Do you have anything to say about item B?
I got a lot to say about a lot of things.
Okay, go to, go to B.
If you stop interrupting, I can get to my point.
You have to be on agenda, or you don't get to speak.
You know, the whole thing about this area that you're talking about is what I'm talking about, because it is set up by the federal government as a place where the citizens that live in that area plan, not the city of Tulsa, not any other entity, the people that live in that area. Now, this is, they're talking about Williams Court or something, and nobody knows about that. This was something the city came up with, other people. How my time going that quick? I haven't talked for four minutes. No, okay. Anyway, I'm against this, and I'm gonna do something to stop the whole thing. There needs to be no more building until this thing gets right. This is not right. The people of North Tulsa are not being treated right, and it's time for stop all this crazy illegal stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Ms. Bernice, have any time left? I don't know.
Ms. Bernice has a minute and three seconds.
Ms. Bernice, you have a minute and three seconds.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with my husband. It is time for all this wrongdoing, illegal, criminal activity that you all are perpetrating upon that community, and we're working to stop it. Thank you.
Any council discussion on items five B through C?
Move to approve items five B and five C.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Lakin?
Yes.
Councilor Bush?
Yes.
Councilor Hall Harper? Councilor Archie?
Yes. And, yeah, okay, I would have commented, but yes.
Make your comment.
Should I make the comment?
Yeah.
I would take the base.
Okay, yes.
Councilor Dutton?
Yes.
Councilor Bellis?
Yes.
Councilor Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilor Bengal?
Yes. Items five B through C are approved. Six ordinances, first reading, the following items in this section of the agenda will not be read aloud, and without objection, six A through six U will be forwarded to the next council meeting for action. Seven ordinances, second reading, A, ordinance approving the increased assessments for parcels within the Tulsa Stadium Improvement District Number One. B, ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget for eighty-four thousand two hundred dollars for collection cost reimbursement. C, ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget for one point four seven three million dollars related to Upper Joe Creek East Branch sewer capital projects. D, an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget, moving a lot of money between OWRB, subfunds, promissory notes, and projects. E, ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-five budget for twenty thousand nine hundred dollars for Internet Crimes Against Child Subfund. F, ordinance closing a sanitary sewer easement on Brayden Avenue. G, ordinance closing a sanitary sewer easement at the, pretty close to that, still on Brayden Avenue. H, ordinance closing a sanitary sewer easement on Thirty-Sixth Street. And I, ordinance closing a utility easement on East Ninety-first Street South. Do we have any speakers on these items?
We had one speaker on item seven A, Stuart McDaniel.
I think he already left and it got resolved.
Yes, yeah, we got his questions answered.
Okay, any council discussion?
Move to approve item seven A through I with the emergency clause on seven A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Lakin?
Yes.
Councilor Bush?
Yes.
Councilor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Councilor Archie?
Yes.
Councilor Dutton?
Yes.
Councilor Bellis?
Yes.
Councilor Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilor Bengal?
Yes. Seven A through I are approved with the emergency clause on seven A. Any council items tonight's, tonight?
Sorry.
Yes?
Good evening. If you're a resident of District seven or just want to come out to a town hall, I'm holding one on Monday, June ninth. We will have our new Mingo Valley Division Commander there along with code enforcement. It's at Union High School in Collegiate Hall, and I think it's at six o'clock. You can check social media to confirm it. It's six o'clock to eight o'clock in Grand Hall at Union High School. See you on June ninth.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, sure.
So I want to lift up a, an event that's happening in thirty minutes. If you live on the west side, at Praise Christian Faith Center, they're having an adult VBS, and they're labeling it Faith, Family, and Finances. So they reached out to me. They're having the Financial Empowerment Center come and put on a financial literacy presentation for community members. And so, super excited to get out, you know, city resources into the community. They're going to be talking about budgeting, debt reduction, and so they reached out and they wanted to provide resources for the family, for their families and community. So, Praise Christian Faith Center in, in West Tulsa, starting at seven, going to eight-thirty tonight, if you want some financial literacy. All are welcomed.
Perfect. So that means we have to wrap up the meeting in the next twenty-five minutes in order for us to get out there, right?
Sure.
Okay. Not, anybody else? Nine new business, there is nine, ten hearing of appeals, there are nine, eleven hearing of public comments. So this concludes the televised portion of our meeting.